I'd like to call to order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 3rd, 2025. I'd like to ask Commissioner Kerway to say the pledge for it, or the invocation for us.
Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day and an opportunity to serve the citizens of our great county. As we approach the matters at hand, help us to have the wisdom to see things clearly and respond to them in a manner pleasing to you. We ask of you to continue to bless this community, to watch over all our employees, and to give special protection to our police officers and our emergency service providers. In this name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a quorum tonight with four members present. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the May 20th meeting in your packet. If they meet with your approval, I accept a motion to do so.
Madam Vice Chair, I'll make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do you have any changes to the agenda today?
Ready for your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll move forward with it as is. We do have a presentation item this evening, and I would like to invite Chief Wallen, along with members of the Burn Foundation and Columbia County Community Connections, to come up.
Hey, everyone. This is my favorite commission meeting of the year. Our firefighters stand out for six days, a couple of weeks in May, and collect funds. And it's always amazing to see remeasurement as trust is when someone walks up and just throws money into your business. So it's always my pleasure, on behalf of the firefighters, our county management, and the support of these two amazing... Steve is from the Burn Foundation of America, which works for us. They deal with firefighters burned from all over the country. And in hand to do that, and then Columbia County Community Connections takes care of the kids that help in this county. A lot of time with them, our C program, the summer camp, which we're... these funds for. So it is my pleasure and honor to give you just a little over $38,000 for your organization.
So I'm Chaz. This is fantastic. I was joking earlier that we love this, the boot drive Columbia County Fire so much that we coerced the board. So we've been around for many, many years. Like Jeremy said, we make sure kids are part of a safe and stable family, and that is everything from after school, summer camp. We do a day shop with a fireman at Christmas. This helps give kids a Christmas more than any of us could ever imagine. Food for kids. Kids need help in this county. We find a way to do it. So received this for many years and could not exist without it. So thank you, thank you, thank you. You guys are amazing.
Yeah, thank you as well to everybody here, the leadership of this county. And I just want to say, I know that a lot of people talk about the storm, Helene, and all these things, and here we are eight or nine months later. But I just want to say that the fact that, you know, I'm a runner. I run all over the CSRA, and I see, still see the remnants of that, and some of it more devastating than the others. But the point I want to make is to come back eight months later for not one but two weekends in a row. The second weekend was raining and miserable, and to raise this kind of money is a testament to not only the giving and philanthropic nature of the community that we live in, but also the respect and the trust, like you just said, and the appreciation for our guys at Columbia County Fire Rescue and the fact that they support local causes. We're proud to support the largest burn unit in the country. It's number one by far. And I urge you to come visit us. And again, I'm, you know, proud to be associated with you guys, and we will always be good stewards of the gracious donations that we receive. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Wallen, and to the firefighters for all your hard work in raising that money, and to two great nonprofits for all of your contributions that you make to our community. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each of the items have been through the necessary committees and have received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. If they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve all of them.
No move.
Second. You have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Onto the debate agenda, and we will begin with Commissioner Malir.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2513, adopting an annual budget for all funds of Columbia County, Georgia for fiscal year 2526.
Second.
So just to give you just a quick overview here, and then if you have any questions, either myself or Ms. Reese can answer the questions about the budget. This is our annual adoption of the budget. You have all budgets in front of you. We'll focus on the general fund, just as far as giving you an overview. That's the fund that gets the most attention. We do have a balanced budget presented to you tonight with a healthy contingency. We did do this year's budget a little bit different when we were working through the process, which really began, I don't know, five months ago, maybe almost six months ago. We had direction from the Board of Commissioners to not have any increases in the budget. We were coming off the heels of Helene. We knew we had some money out there. We just didn't know how long it was going to take to get our money back. So we were extremely conservative with our estimates, extremely conservative. I want to give accolades to our division directors and our department heads and our elected officials for being very conservative in their budget. We were actually able to bring in a budget that was less than last year's budget in the general fund. Then after we looked at all the revenues, we did increase that a little bit, but the overall increase to the budget is just a little over 3% from last year. And in a growing county like Columbia County, I'll say that that's just, again, a testament to us being conservative, this board being conservative. We did, at the direction of the Board of Commissioners, we did take into consideration a tax rollback. That will be done at a later date, but this budget is built around the idea that you will be lowering property taxes when that time comes. So we are not spending beyond our means. But again, we are a growing county. We have a lot of needs. You will see that in the general fund, we only had a total of 12 new positions. That was for the entire general fund. And then we also had some reclassifications. And then the capital request actually decreased from last year's budget to this year's budget. So again, very, very conservative there. We, again, looked at all sources of revenue, sales taxes doing well in Columbia County. So we are definitely benefiting from that. There were some things from our budget hearings that came out that we had to go back and fix. So there were some additions that were made on some deferred reclassifications. I guess making our PR department a little more robust, trying to make sure that we get Columbia County's story out, working with our judges on some pay issues, working with our coroner on some requests that our new coroner has in place. We were able to get all those in. All the HR reclassifications, we were able to get those in as well. I think that's pretty much, pretty much it in a nutshell. You can see that all, all funds are balanced, as are proposed here. So you would be adopting all funds by adopting the budget tonight. I'll answer any questions you have, or Ms. Reese will answer any questions you have.
It's basically a $104 million budget.
A little over $103 million, yes, sir.
Do you remember what your first budget was?
Uh, yeah, I don't remember exactly what it was, but I want to say it was somewhere around $68 million, if memory serves me. But I've been here for 17 years. So in 17 years, this has grown. But this community has grown, the needs have grown. We didn't have our own fire department then. We were contracting with a fire department. And our population has grown significantly in my 17 years.
I didn't mean it in any negative context.
No, I just...
And I just meant, yeah, how much we have grown.
We have, we have grown tremendously.
I was here shortly after that, and I remember it being in the 60s.
Yeah. So yeah, $60 million to now, you know, a little over $100 million. But kind of an interesting caveat, I believe when I first started, we had right at 1,000 employees, maybe a little over 1,000 employees, and now we're at, right at 1,400 employees 17 years later. And 200 of those were when we brought the fire department on. So we've not grown government significantly over, over the last 17, 18 years.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Standing with you, Commissioner Malir.
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2517.
Second.
This is a resolution for the approval of issuance of bonds. Mr. Driver can give us any additional information that we need. This is for sale. This is a pass-through for us. We are not backing these bonds. We don't have any obligation to pay these bonds. There is just a requirement in the law that the governing authority actually approve this. So we have done these before. This is the second time we've done this for this particular school. Didn't have any issues last time. Don't see any issues this time. Chris, anything you want to add?
So the sale charter school is adding classrooms, and to do so, they are using tax-exempt bonds. Under the federal rules, as he said, there has to be approval by the county government, and there has to be a public hearing, which will be held in... The reason for that is transparency. It has nothing to do with county taxes. It has nothing to do with liability of this board or the development authority. 100% of the liability is on the school itself.
You have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Onto Planning Services Committee for item I-1B-1. Mr. Schokter, will you walk us through the information on this item before calling for a motion?
Yes, ma'am. So what you have currently is a R2 zone piece of property. R2 is residential with 10,000 square foot lots. Request is to go to a PRD, a planned residential development. This is approximately 15.44 acres. The request is to allow them to put cottages that range in size from 800 square foot to 1,500 square foot, and I'm being very gentle with those. Flexibility there. You can see a layout here. The original proposal had about 120-ish cottages. We had a lot of concerns with some of the access for fire, since that access has been looked at and been modified. It did drop the number of cottages down to 104. You will see, based on this map, there are free-standing cottages, well as duplexes, as well as more of a townhome style where there are multiple units connected together. It does, like I said, 104 units. These areas you have in the middle here, these are actual pedestrian ways that will double with as fire access in the event it was needed. About 220 or so parking spaces would be provided as well. A lot of this area up front here is wetlands and streams. A lot of care of making sure that this applicant knows if they are allowed to build this. There's a lot of environmental challenges to get across as well. Leave that sums it up. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Is the applicant here? Do you like to add anything? All right, Alan, I'll accept a motion on this item.
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to disapprove the request for rezoning from R2 to PRD for property located at Tax Map 079, Parcels 110 and 110A, in order to develop attached and detached cottages on the property, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 15th, 2025 Planning Commission.
Second.
Questions? You have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item I-1C. I would like to make a motion to approve the underground easement with Georgia Power for property located on Tax Map 072045B.
Second.
This is an easement to allow Georgia Power to establish new service to our underconstruction building A, as well as relocate the existing transformer for buildings A and B. It'll be relocated as part of our new site layout when building A comes down.
Questions? Motion and second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Any legal matters?
What matters?
Any requests for review by committee?
No, ma'am.
Have three members from the public who would like to speak this evening. Your Howard Johnson. You could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Commissioner Allen, would you mind to sit?
Good evening. Howard Johnson, 252 Silver Maple Road. I'm here to speak about the decision made at the May 6th meeting to remove our library from the Clark Hills Greater Clark Hills Regional Library System. This was a decision that was not on the meeting agenda prior to the meeting. It was added to the agenda verbally while we were here. The vote was then done before any public comment. So I believe that this decision was made in haste without public comment or opinion from the constituents of this county. Mr. Johnson, I believe, spoke about the impact and said, and I quote, "This will not fundamentally change the library." So my question is, if this decision will not fundamentally change the library, what benefit does it have to the residents of this county, to the patrons of the library? You see, when I have companies approach me, internet, cell phone, whatever, and they say, "We have the exact same service that you're currently getting at the exact same price." I have no reason to change, right? I'm perfectly happy with what I currently have. There's a saying that I've heard often, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Our library is not broken. Given a budget of approximately $3 million, plus or minus, forgive me, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, the library saves the residents of this county approximately $10.5 million annually in what they would have spent on books or other entertainment. They're doing great. They don't need any modification. I also remind you that at the May 6th meeting, I asked the members of this board if any of them were qualified librarians. And for the record, all five stated no. I asked why we are getting involved with the library if we're not qualified librarians. And I was told that, and I quote, "I also don't know anything about building roads, and I vote on that." I find that concerning that the members of this board would be so flippant about their lack of qualification and continue to move forward with decision-making. So finally, I would like to educate you all a little bit about how libraries work. You see, should be obvious, right? We share books at the library. That's how they're able to save us so much money, because instead of me buying a book, you buying the same book, you buying the same book, right? I can read it, return it to the library, then you can check out the same book, right? And so we save some money in that way. The partnership with the other counties in the Greater Clark Hills Regional Library expands our access to more books. It expands our access to more patrons. And the reason that's important, you see, a library tries to maximize its collection size, and libraries are limited by the real estate that they have available. I currently have four books checked out from the library, so they are not taking up any space right now on the library shelves. Librarians are able to optimize their collection, knowing the approximate numbers of books checked out at any given time. So the total collection owned by the library is significantly larger than what would physically fit in the library, because it is calculated based on the use and overall circulation. By having a larger partnership with more, more libraries in the area, that gives us access to their real estate to store their books. It also gives us access to their patrons to store books. Now, this may seem inconsequential, right? One-zie, two-zie books at a time. I'll remind you, during the storm, right, some books may have become water damaged. It's good to have backups. It's good to have things in different locations. It's good to not put all of your eggs in one basket. Cutting ourselves off from the Greater Clark Hills Regional Library System eliminates some of this redundancy and will weaken our library system. Finally, I'd like to end with, I've heard many people speak about the library. Many unqualified people speak about the library. At the meeting on May 20th, there was a woman who suggested moving the large print books from the upstairs section to the downstairs section in the adult section. The large print books are kept in the first floor deliberately because the crossover between people who might want to use large print books because of their vision, and the people who might struggle with stairs, is actually quite large, right? This is a simple solution that's immediately obvious if you put any thought into it, and yet we have people up here making suggestions without making that thought. So again, I ask you to consider the opinions of professionals and not random residents of the county. They don't know what they're doing, and the actions of this board have shown that you all do not know what you're doing either. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Here in Lawrence. If you'll state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Here in Lawrence, 148... One half more head drive. Good evening. I have been at the last few board meetings, listening to the debate over the library's guidelines for book content and the decision to leave the regional system. A big point of contention has been who is responsible and what is necessary for protecting children in the library. I noticed in the last few meetings that we have heard from both sides, but we haven't heard from anyone who can speak on the experience of children, the group we are interested in protecting. I was one of those kids. My family moved to Columbia County 23 years ago in 2002, and we have been visiting the Columbia County Library consistently ever since. My sisters and I have moved through the sections for each age group in this library. My mom would come with us and stay near us at first, closely watching all three of us, but giving us more space, some by choice as we grew older, and some by necessity as we spread out through the sections and floors for our different age groups. My sisters and I were raised with conservative evangelical Christian and homeschooled values. We were not allowed to read books with sex scenes, any form of explicit or graphic violence, magic, wizardry, cuss words, potty humor, LGBTQ content, or anything sexual in nature at all, including kissing that went beyond chaste kissing constrained to long-term relationships or marriage. We also weren't allowed to read books that discussed evolution or other religions. So the guidelines that I was raised with were even stricter than the standard these library guidelines tried to establish. Before I continue, I would like to remind everyone for context that the guidelines were not in place when I grew up here. Would anyone like to guess how many books in the library that did not meet our family's standards that I've read? Done. My mom, monitoring three young children under seven until we were young adults and everything in between, took the personal parental responsibility of enforcing our parents' individually chosen values for our household. These government-enforced guidelines were not in place and were not necessary. I never felt smothered, and she never micromanaged our choices. While I will never minimize her effort or say what she did wasn't important, this was not a Herculean task. She just reviewed the books we chose and knew how to tell which books were appropriate for our family and which weren't. She also communicated to each of her children the family values so we could do the first review for whether or not the book was appropriate for our household, and then she did the final review. And this was before you could Google what content is in a book, so reviewing your children's books is way easier now than it was when my mom was raising me. In conclusion, the government should not be involved in our readers' choices. The library is for all of us. If a parent wants to limit their children's reading topics, they're responsible to do it while leaving books where they are for the rest of us who are interested in reading them. If random people without children can find the LGBTQ books and be upset by them, I'm confident parents appropriately monitoring their children will be able to spot these books as well. My mom certainly did, so I believe she is proof of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's in Warren? If you would state your name and address.
Yes. Susan Warren at 5129 North Tubman Road, Apple. And my thing tonight that I want to talk about is what I heard at the last meeting regarding the data center. I live in Apple. You're planning on putting a 2,000-acre tract in Apple, or a data center, or data centers, I should say, because after that meeting, I started looking up information about this. Trammell Crowe is the company out of Atlanta that wants to get this all out there. They estimate that it's going to be an $11 billion data center with 29 buildings. This means that it would take six electric substations to utilize, I mean, to give them the power that they're going to need for this data center, or these data centers. They also would have to use, and if we're not going to have our county water diverted, we're going, they're going to have to use a glycol-based cooling system. Now, this plan that they've put out says that they, this is an 8.1 million square foot proposed development. 8.004 square feet of that is going to be the data center. They have not given a whole lot of real information about this yet. And Columbia County said that it will provide 118 a year in annual tax revenue. That's great, but how much is it going to cost us? Going to pay to upgrade the utility? Going to pay to upgrade the water? Is it going to be Trammell Crowe? Going to be Georgia Power? Or is it going to be the Columbia County taxpayers? I really am interested in that. A 29-building data center is going to strain the... GovTech has put out recently that a 20-building campus will require more power than one of Plant Vogel's nuclear... That's a 20-building data center. Electric substations would take up over 82 acres out there. That's just the substations. Okay? The county planners said that they would likely use glycol-based cooling, and that's a, that's a component of antifreeze, glycol is. But if they don't, they, the statement was just likely that they will use that. If not, then they're going to have to use water. So, you know, this property borders Kioki Creek and White Oak Creek Ranch and its tributaries. What happens if there's a leak of this glycol? Is it going to affect our water? Going to affect our good creeks and rivers around here? Servers... Talked briefly about noise last time. Servers that will produce up to 96 decibels of noise. But they're also going to be HVAC cooling towers, backup generators, which can produce up to 100 decibels. So, you know, it's, it's not going to be a small thing. And the other thing is, it's not just the decibels when it comes to noise. The, the one big thing that I think about is that continuous hum comes from something like this. And I know you've all heard that in different places. It's very annoying. It's really damaging to the psyche to not be able to turn that noise off ever. So I'm just really disappointed in this.
We thank you for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts on that. We do have a packet of information that was submitted with the rezoning. You would like to get with Mr. Schokter after the meeting and give him your information. We can send that to you, or you can request that in an open records request, and we'll be glad to send you information from the narrative.
I have a question. I know you've submitted, what is it called, an IR? I mean, a... I know you've submitted, what is it called, an IRR, I mean, DRI date? Have you heard anything from the state?
We have received it back. Mr. Sterling actually processed that thing if you'd like to give us.
And for anybody that's interested, that's a development of regional impact statement.
So, the DRI goes out to number of our neighboring agencies, the two cities, the fort, Augusta Richmond County and a couple other agencies. All of those folks have an opportunity to respond to the proposal as submitted. And the only request, or the only response that we got was, I believe, from Lincolnon. They acknowledged that they received it. That was it. There was no feedback of any sort or any of substantial on that. So, that's what the state received.
What I could gather, this will be the largest one in the state of Georgia, is that not correct?
That's what I was told, yes ma'am. My understanding is.
Thank you for being here. And like I said, if you'd like to get with Mr. Schokter after the meeting and give him your information, we'll be glad to send you the details that we have that was submitted with the rezoning.
Thank you for hearing me.
Yes ma'am. We have four executive session items tonight that can be dealt with here and now and we will begin with Commissioner Malier.
Yes ma'am, I make a motion to approve the employment agreement for Stephen Prather.
Second.
This is a result of the budget. Part of the budget, we have created a new division and Mr. Prather was, was a department director. He will be promoted to division director with new reports, or new departments reporting directly to him. He's a contract employee.
You have a motion and second on the floor? All in favor, raise your right hand. I make a motion to approve the purchase of temporary and permanent easements for the Woodbridge Lift Station, parcel 071C187, in the amount of $4,000.
Second.
For the recently completed Woodbridge Lift Station, this is an easement to finalize that project so we can make sure we can maintain and access our new system.
Questions? You have a motion and second on the floor? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. I make a motion to approve $6,000 to John Shepherd, parcel 072B159. $13,500 to Kim Lowry, parcel 072B052. $25,000 to Lori and Neely Lovett, parcel 072B051. And $205,000 to Cynthia McKinley, parcels 060004C and 060004B, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
These are standard negotiations, part of the Hereford Farm project paid for out of House Bill 170 money.
Questions? Motion and second on the floor? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I make a motion to approve $14,700 to Jeffrey R. Smith, parcel 067C003. $5,300 to Matthew Black and Crystal Black, parcel 073004E. And $16,700 to Brenda Marshall, parcels 067093 and 067092, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
Being standard negotiations for right-of-way, this brings us to 74%.
Motion and second on the floor? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We adjourn.